My name is Sandy Griffiths and I'm the Acting Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting this evening. I would like to call the November 8, 2021 Town of Prescott Valley Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Roberts, would you please lead us in the invocation? Commissioner Laney, then if you would lead us in the pledge.
Sure.
Father, we thank you for this gathering. We thank you that it will be the opportunity to serve this community. We thank you for, I ask you to be with our vets this coming week and watch over them and bless their service for what they've done for us to protect us from our freedom we have like this meeting we're having this evening. Thank you in Jesus's name.
Would you join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, when it is invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Laney. I would first like to welcome and acknowledge our newest member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Ms. Bree King. Thank you for being with us and I certainly do appreciate your valuable insight and input.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
If the Commission has reviewed the minutes, I will entertain a motion for approval of the regular session of the Planning and Zoning meeting of November 11, 2021.
Attendance.
Oh, roll call.
Commissioner Rutherford. Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Laney.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin. Chairperson Zurcher. Acting Chairperson Griffiths.
Yes, here. Thank you, Ms. Christie. So if the Commission has reviewed the minutes, I will entertain a motion for approval of the regular session of the Planning and Zoning meeting of February, oh, sorry, October 11, 2021. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Do we have a second?
I wasn't here for that one, so I believe I abstain.
Or she can't.
Right.
Then I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Laney. All those in favor?
Aye.
We now need to approve the minutes from the work-study Planning and Zoning meeting held on October 11, 2021. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we accept the minutes from the October 11 joint meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Laney. Do we have a second?
No second.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The work-study session minutes and the minutes of the regular meeting have been approved. Are there any public announcements?
None from yet this time.
Commissioner Roberts? Public announcements?
That's my knowledge.
Thank you. Commissioner Laney?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Our public, our public hearing this evening is Hearing Item GPA 21-001, Discussion and Possible Forwarding and Continuing of the General Plan 2035 until December 13, 2021. Mr. Ballmer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Wayne Ballmer and I'm a consultant that's been retained by the town to help you complete your new update of your general plan. I also would like to thank you all for attending that joint meeting with the Town Council last Thursday night. It was a very helpful meeting, very interesting meeting, lots of good insight and comments and questions and suggestions, and I received quite a few comments and suggestions from, from Ms. Griffith and Ms. King in response to that, which I greatly appreciate. We received so many comments, in fact, that we haven't been able to compile them all into a new draft for you since we had Friday and today. And so what I'm recommending is that we continue the discussion on the plan that you have, this one that we handed out last week. And if you have any additional comments or suggestions, get them to me. We would propose then to bring this back to you at your December 13 meeting for further discussion and possible action. I get the sense from talking with people and your comments and other people that people aren't quite comfortable with it yet and would like to see some more refinements before it goes forward. And we're fine with that. We would have two weeks from this coming Wednesday to complete the new draft and get it to you. Your packets will be mailed on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so our timeline would be this week and next week to compile all the comments, update the maps and other sorts of things, and get it to the printer so it gets out to you two weeks from this Wednesday. But what I have given you is a little packet of information, some of the new things that we have done since we met last Thursday. And we were going to propose a new cover, I mean, so it looks different, so people know this is the new draft versus the old draft. If you look on the inside, the first map you see is a new map for the schools. List all the schools by name, whether they're public or charter, high schools and colleges, and it's clearer as to what's where. That was a concern before as to where are the schools, how many are charter, how many are public, are they high schools, elementary schools? So it covers that. We had quite a discussion at our last meeting about the pads that we have that incorporate state land. And we talked about how would we designate them on our fold-out land use map as to be state land? And we at the staff level were looking at how do we add another layer that would be clear and not overburdening the map? So what we decided was to do this new map that you have in your packet, and it shows the paths, it shows the state land. And if you looked in your book at that, there's a page right here that says "Left Intentionally Blank." That map will go on this page, so will be right next to the land use map. So you can look at each one and see, okay, I see the state land there. Also, for every description of a pad that's earlier in the chapter that has state land in it, we've modified those to talk about, we put ownership and said this pad include the north side or the east side or whatever is state land. So if you're looking at the little pad, you'll see it's state land. If you're looking at the map on page 32, you'll see where the state land is. If you look at New Land Use 6, you'll see where the state land is in the PADS, and then this one actually shows you the area around it. So we thought that might be a way to handle it rather than just putting AZ, which is a good idea, but we thought we had this extra page, we could do an extra map, and it would make it clearer for people. So that's, that's the second item in your packet. We had a discussion then about trees, trees, city memorial trees, Memorial Park. Remember those discussions about you could plant a tree in the town? We've added a section into the Parks and Recreation area about Tree City USA. Prescott's a tree city, and one of the things is our memorial tree program. So we've added this section in there talking about that. Also, there's discussion about how come we didn't mention anything about the Prescott Public Library? Great library, it's a good resource for the town. If you look at the surveys that come back, people really like the library, so we thought we would add some information on the library. And so we've done that. We've also reviewed it with Casey, the Parks and Library Director, for her concurrence on what we have. We also are going to add a map, the next one down, showing the main library and potential branch library locations. That seems to be a discussion as well as, you know, it's quite a ways for me to go from my house to the library. Could we put branch libraries at some location? And we have one, for instance, to the north, where an elementary school is also planned. Maybe those two could go together, and then one to the southeast. So that will be in the, in the plan as well. The next one then is the Table of Contents. And you see, we've moved up chapters 13 and 14 to be the second and third, but you'll notice another thing, both of 1 and 13 are green and 14 and 2 are blue. It's because the sequence is green, blue, red, gray. And as you go through the, you can see is that we did it that way so that you would know if you're in the green chapter or the blue chapter, and there was space between them, so you wouldn't be necessarily in the, in the introduction section if you were looking for the housing elements. You would know that they're, they're different. So in order to do that, what we're going to do is need to change all the colors on all the pages in the whole plan. So what we would do then is 13 would become green, 14 would become red, and, and then 3 would become gray, you know, they'd all move up. And as you think back to looking through the plan, every plan page has on the top and at the front that same color, so you'd coordinate them together. So that was one thing we could not get done today was, was to change all of the colors on all the pages in the whole plan. So, and also that was something we were wondering, again, if we were, if that was something, I know the Vice Chair acted, is interested in that, but is, but typically the implementation is at the end because it's after you've gone through the plan, now here's what we do. Now, we can move it up, there's no law that says it has to be at the end, it's just traditionally at the end, and that's why it was shown that way in the draft. But we would be looking at that for more and if there's any more direction on that. But that would be one of our work products then that we need to do for December. The next thing we have is the part that starts out says, "We want to hear from you." We're doing an appendix. Rather than have all that material in the front introduction where we talked about the surveys and all, we're going to smooth that up and say, "We did the surveys, why we did the surveys," but go to the appendix. So the appendix, because this map is in, this graphic is in the front, it doesn't really fit there very well, so we thought we would do that as part of the appendix. So then we talk a little bit about the appendix, about the surveys, we have copies of the draft surveys in there, and then we have the news release where we start to talk about the results that we've received, and, and then we talk about the Five Things survey. And at the end will be the updated Survey Monkey survey with the bar charts for the 20-question one that you got in your packet last time. I was looking at that today, and last week when we talked, we had 384 people who had taken the 20-question survey with the bar chart. As of today, we have 397. So we're, you know, three people away from 400 who've done that, which is a pretty good thing, and we will keep it up through the end of December so that we will have a final number for you to be included in here at your December meeting. Also, on the, on the five, top five things we did, when we talked with you last, we had 271, now we have 280. So we're hoping in not-too-distant future to get over 300 on that one. And that one's, there's fewer because you have to actually write things out. You think about it and type your answers and all as opposed to clicking the button. The buttons are much quicker, it's easier to do, the other one is more thoughtful. But we look at those to get people's thoughts, what do they think? And again, there's patterns, but there's some interesting ones that come up that people are, are interested in. So that's the packet we have for you this evening. We wanted to show you what we've been working on from our meeting last Thursday night, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, particularly about anything that we didn't cover. We have the comments from last week that we're still incorporating, but was there anything that came up that you thought of after that meeting that you wish, boy, I wish I should have said something about this, this idea? We kind of went past it, I couldn't talk about it, or that sort of thing. So if there's any ideas like that, I'd sure like to get them and to see if you are in agreement with continuing it to your next meeting in December.
Thank you, Mr. Ballmer. Commissioner Roberts, do you have any comments?
I'd just like to make a comment that you did a fantastic job. You're really doing a good job, your team is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Laney?
I'm still in awe. You are amazing what's being done here. I do have, may I ask?
Absolutely.
Certainly.
Okay, we have this draft that you've done for us, this wonderful draft, and now you've got this. Are you going to have to print this all again, or can you make it in a notebook form and we can just change pages?
No, it will get all printed again.
It will?
Yeah. The one, the one for tonight is more to show you what we've been working on.
Oh, okay.
To try to answer the questions that you raised at the meeting on Thursday. But what we want to do is try to keep the whole package together. I didn't want to bring you a draft that was three-quarters done, you know? This one was the first draft to go out to get comments from everybody, and we knew it was going to get changes, we were hoping it would get changes. But the one I bring you next, when it goes forward, actually represents the Town of Prescott Valley. So you want it to be what you want it to be. And if there's typos, we are even likely to hire a person whose, whose job it is just to proofread things, one of those eagle-eyed people that can focus on all of the semicolons. So.
So then we can anticipate in our December meeting, another one of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and the one for your December meeting will be the one that we're proposing to move forward, and we will make enough copies that we will have some for the public, we will have them for the council, we will have them for the staff around town, we'll give them to other people to get their input on, so when it goes out, people know what it is. We may even have a few for the, the public. We've even looked at the ideas, since these, these are a little on the pricey side to print with all of the color in them, of thinking of putting some on a CD and just giving them away to people if they would like to have a CD, if they don't want to download it or whatever, they'd have it on, on something that they could take. We have the CDs, we have the labels, we can put them together if people want.
Thank you. Commissioner King, any comments?
You, may I?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much for meeting with me last week. I appreciate your time. You've done a wonderful job here. This is a huge endeavor and very important to our town, so I wanted to start with the thank you. I do also have a couple of comments and a couple of questions for you if I can. Can you please explain to me, it seems that with most of these chapters that we have, that at the end of the chapter, there's these guiding principles, goals and policies. How did we come up with those guiding principles, goals and policies? Because there's a number of them for the town and for the town to hit, so I just want to understand how that worked.
Yes. Most of the goals and policies, probably except for four or five, are continued from your current general plan. The direction given me by the council was to basically refresh your current plan. Your current plan actually though is dated, and rather than try to do that, we thought we would take a different tack. But because the goals and policies were so important in the current plan, we've kept them pretty much that way. Now, the changes have been made, for instance, in the Parks Department, they adopted a Parks general plan in 2020. They wanted to use their goals, and so we substituted their goals for the ones that were in the general plan before. But some of the goals in the general plan before had to do with open space, and open space is one of the required elements that the state asks for, so we did keep those. We moved them back and we shortened them up just to be open space, but we kept the ones that the Parks Department wanted and added them in. Likewise, the traffic engineering people had a couple that they wanted to add about, for instance, a pavement maintenance plan. Basically, most cities have a plan where they go around, look at all their streets every year, and they rate them from like A to, you know, E, and then that governs how you go about maintaining your streets, which ones have the highest priority for street maintenance. They wanted to add one of those. In fact, the ones they wanted to add were the highlighted ones in the circulation element. But most of the other ones were in the previous plan. I gave you a list at the last meeting of new ones I was proposing because there are things that have changed since then. Some issues about housing have come up that I thought, you know, the, the town is already obligated to do certain things if you take federal funding as far as fair housing, but we didn't really have much in our general plan on it, so I'm proposing to add that in. Some of the things, again, that have come up are environmental issues. You know, what can we do about environmental sensitivity in our landscaping, for instance, to encourage people to, to use water, you know, either water that they've harvested on their site or low-water-consuming plants, or indigenous low-water-consuming plants that are found in this area so that, so that we're not only planting plants, we're planting the plants that used to be here and we're bringing them back again. Other things about environmental, about green construction, you know, how to encourage people to be more energy efficient in the construction that they do. Also, in the land use areas, some of the things you see on compatibility between land uses. Residential areas typically go in first, and then commercial and office uses come in later, and the residential people are pretty well established. The new uses mean, you know, more traffic or something in their backyard where there's currently a field or whatever. And how do you help make those so they all aren't, you know, bringing people to your, your meetings and you don't get anything accomplished because you didn't resolve anything? So there's goals for that. Some other goals in terms of aesthetics in the community. What could we do to improve the appearance of the town? And some of them are plans actually that got started quite a while ago and have gone dormant, and I think they would be good ones to bring back and reconsider. So there's some environmental goals, there's some design goals, things that you might do to make the community more attractive. So that's, that was all on that list, but those are all ones I have recommended. What you see in the book is either what was there before or what your staff has proposed to add, change.
Okay, excellent. So it seems from your explanation that the staff has been involved in this process, and so just when you run a town, there's so many, you know, department, departments and members and, and employees, so I just want to ensure that the staff is aware of these goals that are there.
Yes.
Okay.
And we've taken the different chapters where we have a staff person, the head of that department, we've asked them to review it, provide their input as well, not only on the text that you have, but on the goals that you have.
Excellent. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so then my second comment is going to go to Chapter 7 in regards to environmental planning and water management element.
Which page are you looking in?
It's just the chapter in general, so it starts on page 107. And there is so much valuable information here, great, great chapter. I've noticed that within this plan, there are some very good references, website references to sites where our citizens can go to look up any of this additional information in more detail. In this chapter specifically, which I think is a very important topic for our citizens, I didn't see a lot of references. So I know that last week we spoke about adding one reference in particular for the Consumer Confidence Report with respect to water quality.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this isn't my forte, but I was wondering if there was any way if we could implement any other links within this chapter specifically or who we could talk to about that.
Well, first to answer your question, yes, we can add more links. We, we've tried to do that in other chapters, basically, to, if, say, if you have an interest in there, this is the place to go. There are websites, the Arizona Department of Water Resources has one, and a variety of other groups do as well. Theirs is probably the most comprehensive because they're responsible for water management throughout the state. In fact, that plant list I gave you was specific to the Prescott Active Management Area, and they've done those for, for all of the active management areas in Arizona, to, to go to that level of detail. Here are the plants you should be planting. But there are others about low-water-consuming appliances and other kinds of things that we have that we could add in here.
Yeah, I think that if we could add some additional links to help give the citizens an additional resource so that they could go look into those other areas, because this is such a robust topic, that would be excellent.
And it's also a fairly, I wouldn't say controversial, but much discussed topic as far as water, water use. Do we have adequate water? What's the town's position on this, future growth relation to water? So we've tried to, you know, a lot of this information is to address that, but it's obviously the town is the sponsor. The town owns the water company, and so they want to present it from that perspective.
Right, but because it's such a comprehensive section and because it's such a controversial topic, I think it would be great to give people the opportunity quickly to know where to get additional information if they want it.
Yeah, we, we can, there's two or three spots, as you mentioned, that I thought, right at the end of a paragraph or something, we could add a sentence for more information go here.
That would be awesome. I see, great job, great job, great job, great job. So I think I'm good, I think those are all my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner King. So, Mr. Ballmer, I second that. Great job, great job, great job. We've been through a lot with this, and I know the other commissioners will agree with our reading and our questioning. Thank you for taking us all and embracing us because this is extremely important to the town. In Chapter 7, I have one question on page 115. I have never in all of these years heard of air-aware. I don't know what program that is.
We might need a link.
We might need a link.
I need a link.
Chapter 7.
So.
It's a, it's one of the programs about encouraging people to, to be sensitive about air pollution.
Interesting, I think we need a link.
We need a link.
I need to read about air-aware.
Or, or it may be also that rather than, oh, air-aware, we can put something else in there that might be more current or that people would be more interested in in terms of air pollution? Find something else?
I think that's a great suggestion. I mean, again, I've not ever heard of air-aware anywhere in Yavapai County. And I'm assuming that Mr. Mundelow has put his fingerprint and DNA on the water?
Mr. Mundelow wrote most of this chap.
I figured he did, just wanted to confirm.
Yes. Well, he's our water expert.
Yes.
And we want clear and accurate information to go out to people.
And one question, comment on the pages that you gave us this evening, I think it's rather cool that those are going to go into the general plan where we can see the number of citizens that gave us a checkmark and how many agreed and strongly disagreed. So kudos to you, I'm assuming, for bringing that brainchild forward.
You're welcome.
Great idea.
And, and it is particularly helpful in our COVID time, but also because if you go to Survey Monkey, it only lets you reply once for your computer ID. Where if you do, if you had 400 people and we did 10 meetings and we had 40 people at a meeting, the chances are good that some people would come to every single meeting and they would, they would give you their comments, pro or con, but it can skew the way meetings go because of the people in the audience. This way, it is truly what does everyone think, and everybody has equal time and.
Wonderful.
Opportunity.
Now, again, my concern with this page being in the final general plan, people and our readers are not going to think that they still have access when this general plan is published because they will not be able to make any further comment?
That's correct, they will not. And we will add, I just put this in here for tonight.
Okay, right.
That's going to be like the cover page for this section.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that.
And then on the page following where we're talking about.
Right.
The development, there, we will add a section there when we get to that final point.
Well, in my book, you get an A+. I'm sure my other commissioners will also give you an A+, right?
Oh, A++.
Right, Bree, A++?
Yeah, this is, this is, this is a lot, it's a, it's a big endeavor.
Yes.
So you, just to confirm on that survey, it's gonna, it's gonna say maybe something like, "Survey's been closed" or something of that sort.
It will.
Okay.
During the, during the period between X and Y, "Survey was open when we received these results."
That's a really good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Ballmer.
Thank you for your time.
We have quite a few public here with us this evening. Would anybody like to make comment on the general plan? Please, sir, come up to the microphone and state your name and address. Yes, please. Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Chris Heinz, I live at 3148 North Chua Drive, Prescott Valley, Arizona, USA. And I didn't hear this brought up tonight. I know Councilmember Kendall Schumacher did bring it up, and I had spoken with the gentleman before the meeting, so I was very happy when she brought it up, but I didn't hear it repeated tonight. So I just wanted to bring it up so that it could get considered. And I was hoping that perhaps somewhere in the plan, that there could be a section, maybe a page or something, with the, talking about the Citizens Academy, and perhaps with a group photo of the graduating class, because I know they wanted to have some more photos in this one, so that might be, you know, be a good idea. And also the Police Academy, same thing, with a photo of the graduating class. And that's my suggestion.
Thank you, sir. And Councilwoman Schumacher did bring those up, and those are just extremely valid suggestions, so thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you, and if I could just comment on that.
Certainly.
One of the things that we're working on, but it's in the text and, and we didn't have them all for tonight, is to have a, a little section on citizen involvement, public participation in the town, and that's where the volunteer programs would come in.
Perfect.
We probably won't do a picture, though, because the class, class will actually have graduated by this go, before this goes to the voters in September.
But that's nice that it will be in the general plan.
On citizen opportunities.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public, yes, sir? Please state your name and address.
My name is Frank Dorio, I live at 13024 East Madrid Street in Dewey, part of Quailwood. And my question was for Mr. Ballmer. I was just curious how much commonality there is.
Mr. Frank, Frank, please address the commission, and then Mr. Ballmer can reply.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I was curious as to how much commonality there is between the 2025 plan and the 2035 plan, because I'm fairly familiar with the 2025 plan, and it was well-constructed, the goals and the principles and the policies were really good, and I was wondering if we preserved that going into 2035.
And we will certainly have Mr. Ballmer address your question.
Okay.
I do have one question, though, for you. Did you go online and take this survey and?
Yes, I did.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, there were two surveys, so I recall, so I did them both.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And the answer to the question is, the principles, goals, and policies of the previous plan have all been kept, except those that have been updated by your staff in the Parks area and in the circulation area. All the rest of them are, are the same as they were previously. Now, we're proposing some new ones, but if you have the draft now, and it is on our website, you can, you can see what's in there. In fact, if you go to the joint meeting, I, I don't know if it's under Planning Commission Council, probably Council, Planning Commission, for November 4th, and go to the agenda, it'll have everything that was on the agenda that you looked at, you can download it, open and read and, and keep. And so you can look at a copy of our plan. But the plan actually, you know, we kind of, I don't know, jacked up the windshield wipers and slid a new car under it, because a lot of it was dated, a lot of it was, was older information. We were really looking at focusing on policies. What is it you would like to accomplish? So you see, there's a lot more pictures, a lot more maps, a lot more graphics, tables, things that convey information quickly and easily, reads more like a magazine, I think, than a textbook.
Thank you, Mr. Ballmer. I hope that answers your question. Wonderful. Any other comments from the public on the General Plan 2035? Thank you for being here. The floor is now closed to public comments, and this hearing item is back before the commission. And commissioners, I will certainly entertain a positive recommendation and motion to continue the General Plan 2035 to December 13th, 2021.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Laney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I do roll call, or?
I would love for you to take roll call as well.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Acting Chairperson Griffiths?
Yes. The motion passes. We now have called to the public consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Any public comment? Thank you. Commissioners? We now have one motion for adjournment.
We did motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Do we have a second? Thank you.